Okay, before I ask you.
Okay, order. The municipal office of Wollensheim would like to acknowledge and recognize that we are operating on Treaty One and Treaty Two land, being the original territory of the Nishnabi and the Coleden Nations and the homeland of the Meti Nation. First item is the adoption. We have resolved that the agenda for the March twenty of twenty-four meeting be accepted as presented. Please move that, please. And some thoughts, second, Council Hatch, all in favor? We have resolved that the special meeting in council will be recessed to allow council to hold a public hearing through these representations from many persons to make them in respect to the twenty twenty-four financial plan. Please move that. Mr. Jones, Secretary, Mr. Reddick, all in favor? Period. First of all, I want to remind everybody that every member of council has had an input into this year's financial plan and headed us forward to this point. Well, we pass on to Lainer, Financial Officer, to lead us through your PowerPoint.
You should have a paper talking if you did follow along. And I also turn to the financial plan, which is... Welcome, everybody, and thank you for your attendance and for participating in today's financial plan public hearing. I'd like to start with our introduction of council and staff. Probably everybody knows everybody, but to go through it. We've got Deputy Counselor Pete Hapovich representing Ward One, which is Wollensheim, with Counselor Redner Breaker and Bobby Donald. We're presenting Ward Two. We've got, which is the North Ward, Counselor Rome, Counselor Hatch. And Ward Three, the South, Mike Fisher, Frank Jones. And for staff, we've got our CAA, Jones, Nicky, Edna, Lola Willa, myself. Do you need any questions? Just briefly what we're going to talk about today. The purpose of having the public hearing, a little bit about assessment and tax levies, a review of the budget, mill rates, what you get for your tax dollars, and next it. So first of all, the purpose of having a public hearing is to inform the public about the financial situation and the plans for the municipal, provide a general overview of the 2024 financial situation to assist the public and understand how your tax dollars are being spent, provide an opportunity for public participation and input, give the public a chance to speak and ask questions, and give council the opportunity to respond to those questions. And in summary, it provides an understanding of the relationship between the services that municipal provides and taxes and a difficult decision that must be moved back council to balance with each other. I'll talk briefly about assessment. Assessed values of all properties are determined by the provincial assessment branch. That's what something municipal does at the province. We pay thirty-eight thousand dollars roughly annually for this service. If you want to see the thirty-eight thousand on the financial plan, it's on page three, I mean, twelve eighty. The total portion assessment for all properties in 2023 is a little over one hundred and eighty-two million. Twenty twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-six. The assessed values did not change as a result of the assessment. Changes in the total portion assessment of the difference between those two are one point two three percent are due to redevelopment, consolidation, dis寸, and assessment removed from the tax law. Residential taxes. Residential assessment went up just over three percent. Barn went up point three, institutional minus four point five, another point eight. I'll talk a little bit about assessment and tax levies and how levies are calculated. The individual property tax levies are calculated based, let's follow it on there. The assessed value times proportion percentage, different classes and different percentages on line twenty-six, residential forty-five, commercial another sixty-five percent. You multiply it portioned by the mill rate. For 2024, the mill rate taxes are about eighty-five percent of the total municipal taxes. The mill rate levy and the special levies are set by the budget requirements of the municipal. For 2024, municipal budget of three million one oh two thousand eight sixty-three includes capital projects and contribution leaders. If you're looking for that number on the financial plan, it's on page one. The amount to be raised by taxes has increased four point five zero percent over last year, or one hundred and fifty-five pounds. And note that the school tax portion of the financial plan is not included in this application. There's several different categories of expenses. The first one we'll look at is general government services. It includes legislative, general, Libinian, office legal audit, election conventions. The budget for this category is just over six hundred and forty-seven thousand. That number is on page three. That's an increase of eight point five four percent. Most of that increase can be related to increases in staffing costs of just over twenty-two thousand, increases in computer and software of fifteen thousand, and an additional ten thousand towards developing a green aviation strategy. Next category is protective services. This includes police, fire, emergency, and air protection. The budget for this category is one hundred and sixty thousand three thirty-two ninety-one. That number can also be found on page three of the financial plan. This is an increase of just over six thousand. Made up in part because in 2023 of protective services purchased, over twenty-one thousand in purchase bonds equipment and firefighting gear, with lending received, we will mention. We will add the budget. Transportation services is made up of roads and streets, which includes staff costs, equipment repairs and maintenance, equipment insurance, shop and yard operations, bathroom, and also roof. Roof construction and maintenance, which includes gravel crushing, trucking, road maintenance, reconstruction sidewalks, issue bridges. The budget for this category is nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. That number is on page four. Increases are just over one eighty-six. Some of the highlights of the changes include an increase of just over ten thousand five hundred in staff costs, which includes four thousand in training. We want our employees to be successful in investment training. That includes one person for class two training and delta day training. It includes a decrease in the fuel budget of seventeen thousand, an increase of seven thousand in insurance, which includes compliance safety fitness. Of course, we have a public works executive, which was thirteen hundred of that. An increase of just over twelve thousand, which is mainly the costs associated with the removal of fuel tanks as required by our insurance. And an increase of three thousand allocated to work and labor costs for fix-up walls. That increases also includes an increase in gravel crushing of sixty-one thousand and forty-five thousand gravel trucking. We're doing more crushing this year to take advantage of the lower rate of four dollars and seventy-five cents a yard in the final year of our contract versus the current rate of six dollars and seventy-five cents. We will be covering more roads and crushing to better specifications to improve poor food quality of gravel on the road. It also includes an increase of twenty thousand seven hundred in equipment repairs, like you all said, both can't use it if it's broken. That increase is inflation costs, increased cost of parts, and lack of repairs such as replacing four tires and three skids, making that necessary. Environmental health services includes garbage and waste collection and recycling, other environmental health services. The budget for this is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty. That number is on page four of the financial plan. This is an increase of just under four thousand, or two point nine five percent, primarily due to increased costs of garbage for the chain assembly. And just to note that for 2024 is the final year of the special level services. Public health and welfare. Grants to cemeteries, hospitals, and transit and seniors and dental services. Budget for 2024 is twenty-eight thousand six hundred, which includes fifteen thousand grant for the event, same as last year. The twenty-eight six is an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars. We just accounted for by an official five hundred dollars to each of the five cemeteries. We have four rural cemeteries, Grandway, New Mall, Yep, and the Carol, and then we've got a fallow cemeteries. And seventy-five hundred, can be seen also on page four. Environmental development services includes planning and zoning, community development, the budget is six thousand and there's floor change almost. We have real control over the cost of the restoration of the survey monuments and terror that's been inverted and stopped for some time. Economic development services includes destruction of tests, weed control, net services, water source conservation, tourism, stuff appreciation. The budget for this didn't change much for last year, four hundred dollar efforts, just due to taking a few landings. And just note that this year we will be doing not only weed spraying to better control both the costs and the timing of the spring. Recreation and cultural services category includes community centers, halls, pools, rinks, cerners, and spark playgrounds, grants, and Libinian. The budget for 2024 is one hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty, an increase of just over two percent and is keeping with the recreation support special services. And note also that this is a final year for that level as well. Fitness services includes transfers to capital and utility and adventure debt costs. The budget is three hundred and sixty thousand five ninety-seven, a decrease of two hundred and twenty thousand. The living project is funded through the utilities, T D amount one hundred and ten thousand five ninety-one. Adventure, adventure funding for the ice plant is fifty-two thousand eight thirty-eight, and the aisle here for the adventure for the ice plant for the road. Those numbers come from different places on the financial plan. They're all of three five, but the Libinian falls from page six, which is the utility, and the adventure falls from page eleven. Those numbers highlighted if you're looking for the numbers. And we're not anticipating a deficit for 2023 once the final year audit just looks at the whole thing. Capital budget numbers can be found on page thirteen. Twenty twenty-four budget includes capital projects and the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand six sixty-six being funded primarily for reserves and/or gas tax credits. Then projects and purchases include bathroom, several rural road pavement construction projects, secondary solar payment on the Wollensheim shop, green spraying equipment, paving in Wollensheim basement fire truck, and breathing after a spot with fire department. As the cost of equipment continues to skyrocket, it is proven that we increase our allocation to the equipment for basement fire and building reserves. Contributions to these reserves have increased from two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-four. And those numbers for the transportation reserves can be found at the bottom of page five of the financial plan. The other side. Taxes added, penalties, licensing permits, sales and service, includes a lot of other revenue, just cooperating grants, ritual from the province, gas tax, and transport from reserves. The budget is eight hundred and ten thousand, a net increase of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and four, primarily due to an increase in mutual investment, this increase higher right now, and initial grant revenue potential, initial grant. A little bit about the utility budgets. It's budgeted fully by every town. It's on page six. The budget is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand one ninety-one, an increase of fifty-six thousand to reflect realistic cost of equipment, meters and funds, and increasing repairs and watering breaks. The utility budget includes an increase in utility rates as set out in the pub order, and it's the second of three tiered increases in this order. The budget includes a replacement of pump. Includes a bell replacement of five thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars in upgrades to the water plant. The upgrades will be funded half, and one of the utility reserve, but half through the water services border costs. And the amount of a future venture and local amusement levy for upcoming capital projects, including the generator replacement, and reline and replacing of border lines will be considered for 2025. One twenty-dollar amount of grant comes here in order of financial. So as the graph as it stands now, mill rates for 2024 are in blue compared to 2023 in red. Ten point six two four for the general mill, point two six five for recreation against any grants, point four five zero for recreation against all other classes, one point three zero six mill rate for Wollensheim properties for the Libin adventure, one point zero nine five for Wollensheim properties for the ice plant. Special services levies for parcel charges. Only three of them have changed, a one to blue, sixteen thirteen for the waste to recycle for farm property, ninety-eight thirty-one for parcel for waste and recycling for all other classes, and rural fiber optics twenty-five three on the nearest to that, is zero. When you get future salaries, here's a list of things we can look at, real maintenance, there will be all the fire protection, weed control, consultants, legal, and transit.
Maybe the last show. Everybody has any questions?
Thank you, Edna. So we'll turn over to the audience now. If you wish to make a reservation to it, you can come forward and sit, take the chair there or where you are. Stand, you can know your name and your land number or address. Feel free to proceed. Thirty-five, eight, nineteen. Two questions, actually. The first one is, I noticed on the payroll of last year, twenty twenty-three, there's not one payroll check the same. So do we pay a lot of overtime over the course of the year? Like on every check on payroll?
No, it's short after, you don't pay.
So in the payroll, it's a set payroll, right? So how come it changes so much over the course of the year?
Well, you can have...
I know in June, July, August, you hire extra people.
Yeah, and there can be everything from staff holidays to all those other matters where they get double ten and a half or time and half or whatever situation, okay? So there's all those elements that come in month to month. So that can affect a lot of different numbers.
Okay, one other question. January twenty, uh, January this year, check number three hundred, being year-end staff payroll in the amount of eighty-five seventy-three. What would that be for? Again, a staff payroll.
We will have to get back. That's in this year's, that's in twenty twenty-four.
It was done this year before December of...
Edna will have to look that up and get that checked, okay?
Was it over and above the payroll? It was check three hundred, yeah. Being year-end staff payroll in the amount of eighty-five hundred seventy-three dollars, twenty percent.
Edna will get back to you on that, if you're... Individually. Yes, go ahead.
Patricia Wobbity. Um, just a general question under the general government services for office and legal. I assume there's a need to be somebody kind of kind of personal, but I'm saying, are we looking at ways of cutting back a little bit in regards to some of the offices in regards to, say, bringing in extra meals, because our most singles come out of that budget as well? Um, because it's kind of hard to navigate where all the expenses are coming from and where to do. But I think, and I had asked you about that before, but I'm just wondering if you're looking at maybe cutting back in some areas? Because that is a big increase, and we know there'll be further increases, so.
I think when it comes to legal, it's hard to get a perfect number on it because we don't know what's going to come up in the course of a year.
But for the office, I think we're pretty good at it, you think? You know, but for everybody who comes to Christmas parties and stuff like that, I'm wondering if there's some other measures like potluck dinners and that kind of thing versus the taxpayer group and all, and that kind of goes towards legal? Just a thought.
Some could, you know, took and take a look at.
Lois Hunter. I have two questions on the positions that were approved at the meeting yesterday. What is the front office position, which I understand, if I'm correct, is a communications person that resigns? So we're going to change that position, or we're going to hire additional person beside that communications one?
Um, that is fill in the current vacant position with an eye towards, also starting towards a succession plan. So the physician is currently sitting in vacant, so the job description is changed to vacant.
Okay, so the job description that that person did when they resigned, are all those duties going to be covered, or is somebody in the office going to have to pick up overtime?
No, those will be part of the position that is filled.
Plus do succession planning as well?
Plus take on some of the training for succession planning.
So that kind of says that that person didn't have a full-time job?
That's not the way I would look at it.
So how much additional dollars are we looking at at that position to bring it up?
If council approves, change to new job description, I believe it's thirteen thousand dollars in total.
Thirteen thousand. And then a seasonal operator position? So how much time or how much dollars is required for that position as well?
We've got that budgeted for six months.
Is budgeted for six months and you're going to make it twelve months? Which is approximately how much money?
If it was, if it was over a year, it's thirty thousand. But it would only be three months that is being budgeted for. And it is being offset with savings through utility repairs and equipment maintenance repairs. As we take over the backhoe, we believe we can start doing some repairs instead of contracting it out at current rates.
Okay, but I didn't see a decrease in the care budget.
It will be a transfer between line heights.
Okay. And then utilities will get charged too for the use of the backhoe and that kind of thing? Okay, so it's about fifteen thousand dollars then?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah, okay.
Mike Hawkins, sixteen, eight, eighteen. Um, we've got several things here. I just kind of draw it to the, with the track there. I'm just kind of listening. Line one one two, it says Chief Administrator, Office and Staff. Looks like it's budgeted for three hundred and two thousand dollars. How many P Y's do we talk about of that staff?
What do you wish?
Person years. That'd be full-time people.
That would be the C A O, the finance officer, the two of min staff, and the green team. That also includes some training and that that puts on is, you could be in the...
Um, wait. I thought I seen where, was that one, but when we get down to line three two, three zero one, which is also wages and benefits, another three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Each one is a fifty?
We're now on line thirty-two, three, zero, one, on your transportation services. Just says wages and benefits, not on how many, we got public works manager and two greater operators. Hundred and ten thousand a year each.
Equipment drop, and seasonal, and the green team.
I thought the green team dropped the other two.
That was the office green team. This is the public works green team. We have two different green team conditions.
And the P Y's we got, the first one, we got three full ones, and one of the, the green teams, and they, uh...
It's your summertime.
So very, one, two of the year, and we...
They're summer students.
Yeah, but how, how many, how long do they serve?
Bay zone, so in the water, basically.
I just was trying to calculate here because like there's, what happened on the wall is in wages here and...
Green team is paid, man.
Yeah, and coming down to about three hundred, fifty million, that's twenty-six, I believe. And hopeless, which, it's a little high, I kind of thought. Sorry, that was, it's going to confuse, I don't know. So I'm just kind of wondering how you kind of came about sort of a budget because sat in here one other meeting, and there's a conversation going on about Sandy. How much does Sandy cost to operate and what it, uh... How much does semi cost to operate and what it, there's no real, nobody seemed to know how much you were paying and why it was different rates. Between one and, you know, from one month to another. And that was one piece of equipment, I don't, and then the state has got, I don't know what you have there, but some of it with the backhoe, maybe a loader. Couple of graders. So if you knew the, do you know the cost of operation of the grader per hour?
Well, these kind of numbers will come up in the budget situation. I don't expect every councillor to know exact numbers as to what each grader is going to do, what truck has been. So we have, we have to do that with the information that comes forward. And it takes more than one deliberation of budget. That question may come up in a budget deliberation and then.
You've been grading roads for many years, you must know what it costs per hour to run a grader. So that then you must keep budgeting how many hours you're going to spend on road grade and how much you can stand on snow.
How would you know how much to spend on snow?
Uh, I think it's sort of easy, you know, over the last 15, well, over the last 15 years, maybe you had 12 snowfalls. Eight months, however many, three days to do a snowfall. This year we've had, what, three, maybe four times or so. So that budget may be going through your surplus for next year when you have new units to come back. You need to have some kind of a, um, thing so that, oh, you know what? We need to find $20,000 because we need to have another 100 hours of grading because the roads are not really good right now. So where are you budgeting that if you don't know the cost of your operation? How do you budget for, for what you want?
I'll take this, just read this morning as an example. 2020, to operate a tractor unit on a farm is $220 per day. Now they're saying 700, that's just a few. That's just, that's just one farmer that I read the article on. They don't know what's going to happen every year either, but a budget is not an exact document. A budget is a best guess as of that coming year and what's going to happen. Take into consideration a drier compared to a wet year, snow coming and so it's not exact.
Still needs to budget. I've done budget for 15 years on how to run my operation and I had, you know, I budgeted. Yeah, how many times you're going to go to the new visitor, how many going to do that, you know? And so.
And that's something that councils will come up with those numbers, yeah.
So one question that was asked at one of our council meetings in the public works. And I, I think it's going to be highlighted is that we do have beers for instance on a field place. We were told that we haven't been logging fuel to know how much fuel we were putting for graders in a, in a, in a given day or gravel truck, that type of thing. So I think honestly to answer that question, there are better checks and balances that could be put in place so we have a better idea. We have been looking at the cost of running our own gravel truck, cost per mile versus a contractor. But, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, there's, there certainly could be better checks and balances, if you will. As far as, as going, having a better idea of what to operate and cost per unit.
Yeah, because then you know, you know, instead of re-budgeting, what every piece of equipment, cost per, per hour to operate from the speed dial to the grader to a pickup truck and a snowmobile. You know, so it, going way to budget is to be able to know how much it costs and how much you're going to do what you're planning on doing.
Well, the wages are budgeted, the graders are budgeted for. So the only additional costs, we don't know how much to snow. We don't know that if we're going to have to stick grader out for unusually warm spring thaw like we have had.
But again, if you know what it costs to run that thing and the guy's going to have to go up for 10 hours, you know how much it's going to cost and where you're going to find the money to do that.
So if we hold the budget, instead of a 4.5, we have a 6.5 and we don't want to do that, do we?
I, I'm just asking where, no, we want to do that, but anyway, that was kind of the, the other one, a couple of years ago, I asked about, you know, maintenance budget for the roads. You know, because you wrote your biggest asset and about maintenance and recapitalization. I think you said you have no real thing, anything to work on? What's the progress because you kind of wanted to sidetrack it to tell us you got this award for the best roads when you were in the area. But they're not quite like that today.
Well, and that's weather dependent, a lot of these, these roads. We go back into time with when these roads were constructed. I just talked to a gentleman with one of the world's individuals this morning, when the last road was built on his, that his farm many, many years ago. And road construction was at that time for a two-ton truck. Now we're running semis and B trains on these, these farmers. Heavy, heavy equipment for our farming roads has changed drastically over the last 15 years. To reconstruct the roads would take billions right now. We haven't bought that, we don't want to tax our people of that. We're trying to maintain as much as we can and try to build. We're going to have some work done this year, rebuild and insert roads and we're going to try to do those in this schedule way. If you want to have a schedule as to how we're going to do every road in the municipality, it's not going to happen. It's, you read Brandon's problem with their infrastructure, we've got this as much.
Yeah, you, you need to at least work on a plan.
And that's what our budget is all about. We take look, we have the graveling, we have the grading, we have all that kind of stuff to get involved in that budget.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, it was on here, I assume we had budgeted, I think, 100,000 paid, some paid in the airstrip. But there's 200,000 for road upgrades in the, in the rural. About 270 miles of rural road, how many miles of street?
Well, yeah, and you're taking that line item there though, and I think we have to have a couple of line items because we've got gravel crushing, gravel hauling, maintenance and that and recent reconstruction in different categories. Pardon me?
That's general maintenance, not recapitalization.
Right, and that's what we're, we're involved in right now with maintenance. That's where our award won on back a few years ago and we had a lot of work to do in those places because you saw this year what happened. We aren't the only municipality with those kind of differences, but we have to stagger in our municipality and this is how we can build up.
What's the life expectancy with the water supply?
Water plant? It's a good question, I have no idea, definitely the one that helps. Because it's upgraded all the time, it's probably got a longer life. Um, I think the last upgrade was done, I'm going to say 15 years ago. Big upgrade. Now this has been doing it piecemeal as it goes along with individual items. I don't, we will have to find out if that has. It comes under asset management. If, if you look at that, if you look at the whole scheme of things, we got the underground piping and all that and sewer and everything else. We got a new living, that's, that's fixed for 50 years. So as you do these items, I don't think, this year we're going to do the upgrades and then to the replacement or the water treatment. So that will increase the lifetime. We have to keep doing that, we're talking about doing the pipes, that will increase. The asset management of that will take overall help with those upgrades.
You're putting money into an upgrade, but you don't know how much life it's about in there. I'm just kind of curious as to where, how you're making those decisions.
Well, it's like, if you take a look at ice fans at the rink, rink is built in 1976. Life expectancy of those is 25 years, it's going to last to 2,000, it lasted to 2,000. You don't know what's likely, if you do this proper maintenance, it's like a farm or a house or whatever, it lasts longer. So to say life expectancy, I think if you look at our, our audit, the audit will give you all those numbers in that audit document as to what the life expectancy would be. Of every item.
To my knowledge, before our special levy to the village residents for, for our water treatment plant was paid for. Water, water services were already had come up with two different, uh, two different things that we, that had been changed on it. So they're changing it all the time. And I know they were told again in perspective that you have to keep it up when your service and drinking. As far as the lifespan, it's, uh, I think it's going to be in our assessment because we're hoping it's a long time because it's very possible.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that the, the upgrades are recommended by the. It's, it's not us that are coming up with these. It's not like it's going to be done next year.
But you don't really know.
We've been in the cesspool, I'm sure, and that a lot of the services.
How many of our staff are union?
So the majority are, there's only two unionized employees, I'm sorry, no, the four, four. The two grader operators and two waste transfer stations. When the season was. Okay, two, the two, the grader operators, the two waste, waste transfer stations and the seasonal.
And the public managers, no? So we're five union and one?
It would be six. Go fine, 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 fine.
For ten staff that the municipality pays, they were given wage increases that had a much in the budget. Was it an cost increase for people or was it merits or is there some formula for how much you want?
The, the unionized staff was given the same increase as the office staff. I don't think we applied it to the senior, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't know if we applied it to the waste transfer station.
It was your full-time staff?
It's full-time, yeah.
So all full-time staff are still the same?
That's right. Same as seven percent?
Seven percent.
Yeah.
How, again, what is the mechanism for coming that because we have both unionized, not union people. So was the union deal part of the, was it?
Some, the union, union negotiated with a two percent. Council felt it is our responsibility to increase that salary to keep on good staff. So we asked the union if we could take a one-time pay rate for them on the side of the contract and they allowed it. Well, if, if you want to have good staff, you pay them, otherwise we're going to lose another municipality.
We're, we're well under the private sector wages block.
So you basically revoked the contract to give people.
No, we didn't break the contract, we asked for permission to give them that. And we, we would not have got done it, the union said no, then we were in the.
That makes me say.
This is one. A perception that doesn't vector. Put the lady in the back first.
Again, page three of the draft, 2621, building inspection. Exactly what is that? We pay somebody to go and inspect buildings or are we getting our building inspected?
We have a building inspector, we go to the office of fire commissioner. So they do our inspections for us.
So can we build?
For the RM, building, do you mean?
No. Go for it, if the, sorry, build a new home.
Does he not pay for that?
Pardon me, does the person building the new home not pay for that? Including it in the, in the.
Okay, they do a development permit through our office and they do a building permit through the office of the fire commissioner. So the office of the fire commissioner charges them for their permit. We pay for them to be our retained building inspector to do the inspections.
So the builder pays for it. So last year you had a budget of 6760 there, never took any money for that budget at all, actual. And now you budget for another $5,000 this year, never used any money last year. And then the electric or the plumbing, there's nothing from 2,003 last year and this year you've got $12,200.
So for the building inspector, right now, the office, the fire commissioner is contemplating eliminating doing their services. They have been charged municipalities the last two years because they are contemplating not continuing. But we needed to have the money in the budget because if they don't continue, then we are going to have to find another side building inspector.
But the people that build the house, do they not pay for the inspection?
No, they paid for a building permit.
Oh, okay.
Right, the inspection services are provided by the municipality.
I just have a question under the, what we get for the taxes and one of them is streetlights. Um, I made an inquiry. Just due to the fact that mailboxes getting broken into seems to go in spell. And I did inquire, I went here to see if the hospital to get a streetlight. But I did actually call them. So, um, and then I think I got an answer like, is there streetlight in Mesquite?
Where?
In Mesquite, or not Mesquite, maybe, you know, one of them seemed to have streetlights and it didn't make a difference.
Well, I think when they, when they took the police office out of, out of Carroll, we asked them to, they wanted to have mailboxes, so we put it where there was a light. We asked them to put it there so they could be riding, riding by and ever there would be a light there, that's why they're there. We didn't put the light there, the light was only there.
Is it possible to put?
Well, there's something we, we should look at a council, sure.
I know what.
Is there a hole there on our?
Hydro pole?
Uh, just across the road, there's, yes, right at the middle block, there's a power line going up everywhere on that road.
It's one of them.
Yeah. I, I mean, it's just my belief that, I mean, they're out there. It just makes it easier, I think.
Some do look at, for sure.
Yeah, they've been broke into quite a bit and since they've changed the locks, it's also bad. You can see people have been riding all the way.
Trying, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I can look tomorrow, but is the hole, how far away from the locks is it? Like if you were to attach a light to it, would it help or is it too far away?
It would help, yeah.
A little bit, I would, I would too, put lights on their poles and their whole.
Drop pole.
They, uh, they put, you answered about another pole.
Oh, I see.
We did one, what, that long ago?
Yeah.
It's where I've been on.
We'll look at it. Councillor can take a look and.
It would be fairly minimal because there's only, what, three others besides the, the Mesquite.
Yeah, yeah, Carroll and, but well, there's the other ones in Tower Road and.
Yeah, but there was three, less than.
Oh, yeah, three. Yeah, there are probably around 10,000 poles. Usually that's why I'm here.
I just have a question, maybe it's a value answer. Um, we mentioned what the hand transit would soon have succession. It is a service that I think would hire, but we know that it's rested, it's not going to pass safety. I guess my concern comes with liability, especially working with a population that's vulnerable. Are we taking of this still running these hand vans until we locate a rental? Or like, that's where my mind goes.
Yeah, okay. Right, okay. The, the increase to the budget will stay the same, or not increase, but it's been the same for quite a few years and it will stay the same. The van that was in one row, the newest one was the one in January that didn't pass safety. And so we checked it out, it wasn't feasible to do it. Because we have two new vans on order, they're supposed to come, we're hoping in July, we, we don't know 100% what they're, whenever, I've been in contact with them and we're working. So the other van that was in all these stuff is going to be shared between the two, one row in here. It, safety runs out at the end of March and it's the same thing, it's, but it's too much mechanical issues. So we need to start and they're both going to tender actually. So we have a Dodge minivan with a wheel turn around that you can take a couple of people in. So we do have that, which is shared between one row here. Uh, municipality of Wimbo society, person, we are in the midst of renting a passenger, I guess I'll say like a passenger bus, small one. It's not confirmed yet, I'm hoping, I was supposed to find, we're meeting with a guy, I hope Friday, he's got two and he's hopefully going to, he's certainly going to rent us one to you. So I, I'm sure hoping we'll have one to use between. And they'll be at, at safety every six months and we'll have that available to us. If he needs that on a weekend, we will give it up, but we're not using that, this is. And they'll be at, at safety every six months, and we'll have that available to us. If he needs it on a weekend, we will give it up, but we're not using that business.
I guess just my concern is the elements of this.
Yeah, so I just clarify that, uh, if it's, as long as it's safe, then license appropriately, Auto Pack takes that, and they're, they can't sue because it's a vehicle. So there's no liability unless it's all in the.
Yes, can you just walk us through for all the money that's going into rural? Can you just walk us through if there are major projects? I know Cala Road is listed in there, but I don't know the nature of the work of your plan. What, Cala Road is to be, uh? Well, they're supposed to be, if the.
The, the slough is supposed to be, uh, you gotta fill that slough, widen that road, the choke part there. And we, we were planning to possibly do a base and, uh, uh, get a counseling application to that road, the public roads.
Yeah, we've done three, all three.
Cheese bank, turkey ranch, and power.
Your major projects, but it's money there now, so we'll do it.
And maybe I'll just add, it's, it's hard to get contractors. That's what we ran into, trying to get some of them, so. You think there's lots of them, there's lots of business, so we can, that's what another thing about working.
We tried to get them done last year, but then we couldn't get it.
Really?
Yeah.
It's just too small. Well, it's just.
Nobody wants to get them.
Too small to get them.
Get them?
How many places did you ask?
We, we, we put it all for tender.
We put it like, to like, examine, get them up.
Where did Cross Canada, we go?
Works. Fire. One other question here, um, on page three again, um, two fifteen, office, what does that do? What are the costs of the office? Is that paperwork and stuff like that? It's budgeted for a hundred and five thousand last year, like a hundred and, actually it was thousand, it was a hundred and two. But this year it's going to be twenty-two thousand dollars more than last year.
Anything?
That includes several different areas on the expense, so it's. Office contract mileage, outside part for the parking, uh, the property management.
So that's part of indemnity, is that, like a mileage? That would be under the indemnities or part of indemnity, mileage?
Stop. No, stop, stop.
Okay, stop.
Very strong.
So the budget went from a hundred and five-five to a hundred and twenty-seven?
Then office supplies, postage, other general, paying charges.
Yeah, my thought, again, the deficiencies in the building, have they been, um, finished or have they been budgeted for or?
They're finished.
Okay. So all the deficiencies you've done, uh, with the cost, on what that cost?
It's included with the tender, which ended up the tender, the non-tender was, what, not paid was less than non-tender overall.
Sure. Uh, in the, yeah, in the tender for the building, the new build came in less than the.
Less than the tender. The, the laws.
Yes, excluding changers.
Expect, including changes.
Including, excluding.
Excluding.
Yeah, 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 but changers, changeovers, I believe, took it to six, seven plus.
And changers and furniture, no, I should say windows and. It's like, it's like. That we changed from what the initial, uh, plans fall for because council decided we better get more energy efficient. So we changed the whole construction side of it to include more energy efficient, so whether it would have been, where it would have been built doesn't matter. So that was a changer. And then there was the, all the window furnishings, all the furniture.
Wasn't the siding was, you could, they could get a different one, they couldn't supply the one that was in the tender?
There was no change.
Oh.
The, the change orders were the increase in insulation, the change in the fireproofing of the vault, and some changing in the plumbing and the kitchen. And there is, uh, breakdown of the office box on whose horse. And there.
I guess, yeah, maybe one more question there. Been working for the feds for thirty-two years, they've come along and say, we need a five percent reduction in their budget. The rate payers said, and why would I get a cut five percent? How's you go on doing that?
Well, there's, there's all kinds of areas to do that. We can cut back and hopefully put in the replacement cost reserve or replacement equipment reserve. And, and that would allow us to maybe pull the grader for another year and possibly go through repairs with it, whether it's in working. We could do it through the general reserve reduction, where we have nothing for a rainy day month. There's a few things that we could do. But it's, it's has to be reasonable, I think, for the council has to make a decision on that, if, if a group, uh, and majority decide that that's a good idea.
Do you look at those kind of things? Because lots of times that's where you come across efficiencies in things where, uh, uh. As an example, one time, they had a plow truck, they had a sand truck. Two people, two pieces of equipment, the new one was a sand truck and a plow truck. So the guy could sand the plow at the same time, one vehicle. Uh, one employee less, and, um, you know, one wanted to maintain, so there was maybe a little more capital. But long-term, there's, you know, you look at ways like that, so you're finding efficiencies by saying, hey, we better get them. How can we, we, uh, rethink some of the ways to do this?
And that's, I think we take a look at that, the job description that we're talking about, this new individual who, uh, we, we see though. Were, that, we're posting on that, that exactly it. So we, we can do our own digging up of sewer and water lines. We can do all that kind of stuff in the rural with that individual, rather than taking the guy off the grader. Now we can have this individual that's going to be able to do those kind of things and save us a lot of money. Repairs of water mains and that kind of thing is very expensive. And so the utility that's, is borrowing those costs, now they're, they're paying for that individual. So it's an offset there, some synergies there, yes, I think there's all those kind of things, but if, if you take a look at it, it wasn't that many years ago. During winter, we lost both graders. And that was unbelievably tough on our, as far as money goals from this council. We had to come up with all kinds of ways to cover those costs. We had to rent, but rent because everybody was having them open themselves or your other municipal, running with the same situation. We had one boom down, we had another one with accidents, so.
No, I'm only asking, like, think of those kind of things and, oh, you look at ways.
Can I add one to that? With, can I just add one? It's to do with gravel crushing. So, so, and, and it showed in there, our gravel crushing was three fifty, we had a three-year contract. So last year, the three-year contract, it's three fifty a yard crush. So, and it's.
Or, or.
Or, or, when it's four fifty, yeah. So it's going up a dollar a year. So it's five fifty, this year's six fifty, next year's probably seven fifty. Pardon me, I was a dollar off. But anyway, so we decided to crush more gravel, uh, because we can get it overrated, and the contractors agree. That's just one, one. And sorry, I was a dollar off.
Yeah, and, but again, that's how you're.
So that's all we're trying to.
It is all, we have to save, we understand that. We also have to operate, and we want to make sure that we have the best equipment for the people to operate, because of the safe, safety concerns, et cetera, so, yeah, but it's points taken.
Yes? The, uh, the grader operators, you said, you said the union operators?
Yes.
Okay. My question is this, this, this is a discussion point with people in my area, we're always wondering, how do you schedule your? And this gets back to the whole idea of, yeah, I think you can't, right? And let's talk about which kind in particular. The grader operators come in from Monday, Friday, eight to five, and they, they call out, you can say there's a storm, or is there a way that you deal with?
There is, there is a situation that.
That's covered in the grader school period policy. So at what point they work strictly Monday to Friday, and at what point they would be called out and go overtime or weekends, that's covered in the, um, those regular policies.
And of course, your contract too.
Yes, I mean, we're contracted for four days a week.
Yeah, so, so we have to have here, and we're ready to get that stuff, and their, their contract calls for four more weeks, they're going to be here, and if it ends up at the weekend, we can take it.
Glenn, you remember when, at one time, this municipality, when they, unionized? Yep, and it was controversial, that's, yeah, and it was, uh, it was very hard on the employees because they were taking a lot of backlash from the public. And, but they stuck to their guns and basically, well, or we can leave if it works over. And basically, we can't keep getting threatened that we're going to leave and go somewhere else, or we have no employees. And we have good employees, very good employees, and who care? And it's, and we've got to complement them financially to keep them, and we have to. The union is one of the only ways that we can guarantee that we're getting properly trained people, so. And heavy-duty equipment operators are a special breed all on themselves, they're just like nurses or whatever, they have their specialties. And it just, we feel we have to try to keep the ones that are.
I mean, is that there?
I guess my question is why, I mean, I realize this is a, you, you guys can catch up, but.
Well, it's the same as the office opening, so our office is open from Monday to Friday. So that's operational, the same as inside, inside, outsiders in there.
I, I see that as a safety issue.
Well, it doesn't, it don't always get damaged on, or you have snow storms or whatever the case would be in weekends. We don't know what that would be, so we put them into that category, and that's what's worked out.
My, my suggestion would be, I don't know who negotiates this contract, but we would all like, you know, Monday, Friday, obviously, I understand now that. In my opinion, that could be useful for roads, I mean, that's a safety issue, and. I mean, even if one of them, you know, maybe they switched off what he needs to be in the negotiation, I think that's a whole line.
Yeah, they love that.
I thought you just said that goes against current, so it's written in the policy, so I mean, some of that comes into play.
Well, they're on loan at the grader. But in case, with, of course, working with, with public work, you know, that's.
Well, I'm the union.
I was unionized for forty years, working railway for forty years. They changed our shift all the time.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what the agreement is with your union, but there's no reason, like, if there's a big storm coming, and you know there's a storm coming Thursday, Friday, you're not going to send the graders out on Thursday, Friday. So I don't know why they can't go on Saturday and Sunday. I don't know what the agreement is with the union, but there is places there where we can change. I've worked so many damn shifts over the years, some of them.
This, this shift of, of the, what we have, the grader operators, has been going for the last twenty-five years.
Well, I realize that.
So, yeah, so it, it does, is it worthy of change? We don't think we're going to, it's council.
I don't care if they change, as long as they're out Sunday morning or, or Saturday night, you know, pay them the overtime.
We, we do.
Okay.
We do.
Because I see more malls going by our place at two o'clock in the morning, sometimes eleven o'clock Sunday night.
Now, you have to remember, with our grader operators, with our, with our plan that we have as far as snow, snow removal, et cetera, is that they start at one end, one time, and at another end, at the other time. We don't want to come off from one, off, one side all the time. They do just take maybe the bus routes as one element to do, but they work in other areas.
I know you guys have a plan on doing major roads first, but now they're starting backtracking. So if you're gonna do, if you're gonna break, uh, let's say, Turkey Ranch Road, and then go on to do something else, then the next day you do the other roads, that doesn't make sense either.
If you get happening, case, we'll, we'll take that under. Okay, therefore being resolved at public hearing, be concluded, and count. Well, you want to do that, the next step's, that's really.
A couple more things, just a couple more slides. So we're going to conclude the public hearing, adopt the financial plan, get the information to physical, file the tax book. And it's a note that you can make online, pre-transfer those data chips.
But whereas all representative, all representatives are aware that the twenty-twenty-four financial plan of the output, therefore be resolved at public hearing, be concluded, and council will resume its normal order of business. Move that. Second, second, council, all in favor?
Do you have your resolution?
Okay, um, depending what council would want to do with respect to the succession fund position, the code of conduct complaints, and the. Although we don't have to do anything with CISO employment, because that's just a change, if council wants to implement any of those, the retribution would be, be it resolved at the twenty-twenty-four financial plan. Be amended by increasing the administration salary, well, I'm adding by thirteen thousand, and including an allocation of code of conduct complaints in the amount of eighteen thousand, and reducing the allocations for general reserves by thirty-one thousand.
But you go to, even.
Yeah.
Isn't that zero?
That would be zero.
Okay, well, of course, you want to amend it?
Sorry, sorry, I didn't see your time though. I don't remember hearing about any amendment on the budget.
Because they, they weren't included with this package, so this is another item that, these items came up. It's not changing the dollar amount, what we're doing is just changing the structure.
If, if that's what council was wanting to do.
If not, they can do it on second reading.
Uh, you can't amend the financial plan. The financial plan as adopted tonight would be then without amendments. You can make changes to the financial plan after it's adopted, but there are certain limitations to do it without triggering a second public hearing. Doing what is being suggested here would not trigger a second public hearing, it's just that council thought this was more transparent, if we get it now, when the public, when the financial plan is being adopted.
All members.
Secondary?
Moving, how's this more transparent?
Discussion?
It's, council discussions are here?
We still in public session, or the cabinet, back in the session?
Wow.
So, I'll ask a question that I heard in the, uh, in the public, how, how is this more transparent than having a public hearing to? To explain to the public what's actually happening? Because right now, the public can't address this, and the public hearing.
Right, so you can address it as council.
So go ahead. I'm just asking, how is this more transparent?
It is still transparent. I'm asking you now, if council wants to address it, see your opportunity to do that.
So. What is happening is we eat, so is it thirty-one thousand dollars move from general reserves to? What is happening is we need, so is it thirty-one thousand dollars move from general reserves to?
Offset piece.
Offset, no, no budget change, just basically the same mill rate that covers the thirty-one thousand. It's just being put towards something else other than your general reserve.
So we're not taking away other of the general reserve, we're putting less.
Into the general reserve, right?
Now, the, uh, the the position that is, we have decided that that was discussed here earlier, is discussed, is that not correct? This.
Yes, I see.
Somebody asked a question from the public about that position, and what was going to cost, is that not correct? And it was said to eighty-five, wait, or thirteen?
So, Mr. Chairman, my question is that, uh, I'm actually gonna help her, but, uh. If we don't, um, address this as a succession, in other words, we hire a replacement for the, uh, position that has been vacated, that will save those extra dollars, because that person will be coming in at the same wage rate. And at such time as we need a replacement, uh, instead of the succession, we advertise, uh, and it's fair to say we were talking the C A O position at some point. So the other part of that is you advertise, when your C A O says that they're planning on leaving, then you put out an advertisement for a C A O. Right now, we're putting extra money into the, into the staff position, uh, planning on somewhere down the road, that person being the successor. Uh, there's, as I say, the other alternative is to hire a replacement for the person that's left at the lower wage rate, advertise for a C A O when that's necessary.
It's not not necessarily that you're gonna find an individual who's gonna match, but.
Right.
Yes, we're like, right now, we have an individual which we're missing right now, that we're having struggling to fill some of the void right now, like.
No, I get that, I'm just saying that, well, that's the other option, is to hire someone to fill that exact position that was vacant. Exactly, uh, the the other question I have, and this is budget wise too, is we, the money that we've, uh, just been advised of today that's coming from the province, is that already in the budget, or is that found, is that newfound money?
That's seventy-five thousand.
That seventy-five thousand that we've been advised of today? Okay, that that was my question, was whether it was already accounted for or what? I mean, there is an obvious saving there if we don't do the the hire as we put forward, and that speaks to a question that was asked earlier.
Okay. All in favor?
First half of the document.
Be resolved at the twenty twenty-four financial plan of the municipality of Oklahoma, as amended, as set out in the form approved by the Minister of Municipal and Northern Affairs be adopted, and further that the old comforting and pathologist was outlined in said plan be incorporated and in form part of twenty twenty-four tax levy body. Let's see, who's that? Fisher, Dylan. No, sorry, you didn't. No, thank you. All in favor?
I would like your opportunity to turn the rest of council.
No, there's no more in session here, so there's no obvious question, thank you, but no.
I'm requesting your opportunity.
No, thank you at this point, okay? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Phil, let your hand up for opposition, correct? Here.
Quite a word. I do believe that we have the opportunity from the majority over the council to allow some of the speak from the floor, is that not correct?
And we we wish to move that?
I would move it.
Okay, you understand that? Okay.
Just to clear that, we're only cabinet, we're adopting the agenda, but.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so. Be resolved at the bylaw number thirty-nine. Be resolved at bylaw number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, being the twenty twenty-four tax levy bylaw we went to first time, conclude that. Secondaire? Mr. Hatch, now there's no discussion on first reading, all in favor? Opposed? Be resolved at the meeting now does not adjourn, be moved up. Fisher, secondaire, Mr. Greger, all in favor?